Good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission, Monday, January 26, 2009, and it's about 1:10. Oral call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Landergan?
Present.
Commissioner Amerian?
Yes, here.
Chairperson, Marian?
Here. Second item is, Commissioner Chair, vote to confirm Commissioner Landergan as the HBC chairperson rotation policy. I believe I need a nomination.
Well, since it is...
For confirmation.
Yeah, since it is already written here, we have to vote for her.
Take a vote. Take a vote.
Yes, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, Commissioner...
Hold on, hold on. Now, we have to say, shall we say we move to do that, or there is no need for that?
It's a moving moment.
I guess, yeah. Moving moment.
So I move to take a vote in approving Stephanie as our next chairman.
Okay, so as far as the roll call, Commissioner Amerian?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marian?
Yes.
Mr. Landergan?
Yes.
Okay, you're voting three, two, two, eight.
Well, now you have to make this position.
Thank you. Now, we have to switch.
I should have said enthusiastically, yes, but accept it.
The second peaceful transition hour of the month, so now you'll have to change your nameplates.
Of course.
Oh, we do.
Would you allow me to sit next to you?
People might get confused.
I would love it.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Marian for his service and his great leadership for the last year. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, to continue, report regarding posting of the agenda, did we read that?
No, you can read that.
No.
You can read that.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Tuesday, December 2, 2008, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
December 20.
January.
January.
January 20.
January 20, 2009.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. On January 20, 2009.
There's a typo there. It's off in my ears.
Okay, that, all right. Now we have approval of minutes of December 8, 2008, special meeting. Do I have any changes or discussion?
I don't have any comments on it, and if there is no other comments, I'm ready to...
I have no comments.
Okay, then I move to approve the minutes of...
I second it.
All right. Commissioner Amerian?
Yes.
Commissioner Marian?
Yes.
And Chairperson Landergan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. We will now open oral communications. This discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no decision or debate. Do I have any oral communication? Seeing none, we'll move on to our old business, item six, which is an update on the Cedar Mini Park project by Lila Bittar, Department of Parks Recreation and Community Services. Thank you, Lila.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Lila Bittar, architect with the Parks Department and a project manager on the Cedar Mini Park. I'd like to start by congratulating Commissioner Landergan on her appointment as a chair.
Thank you.
We're here before you today on two items. One item is relative to the bungalow and the other is relative to the park. I'll start with the bungalow. On the bungalow, we have chosen color scheme, and what we have, and I've given you actually the color paint chips. We tried to choose a color scheme that is in the spirit of the craftsman. We have four colors. One color, the lighter color, is a background color, and then the darker green frames the openings, and then the lighter, the soft white, is the plaster color and the interior of the windows, and finally, the maroon color is to outline the roof line. And the roof, actually, in this structure is part of its historical significance. So this is the bungalow color scheme. This is the interior of the bungalow. I included it also for you. And again, we pulled the same colors to the interior, and what we are going to do is use two color schemes inside and then highlight the ceiling and all the trims with the white color. In terms of the tile, we're using Mission Tile West, which is commonly used in craftsman This is the second item we'd like to bring before you, which is the need to replace the originally proposed play structure. This is basically the only change we're making in the plans as approved by council. We have installed a structure by this manufacturer in another of our parks, Car Park, and we had numerous problems with that installation, and one of the main problems is the responsiveness of the manufacturer in addressing these problems. So what we like to do, we don't like to magnify the problem by installing another structure in another park that we have to deal with, so we looked for an alternative as a net climber, same type of play, but a different manufacturer. This is the str... We looked at two manufacturers, Little Tykes and Landscape Structures. This installation is at Balboa Park in Los Angeles in the Valley area, and it is basically a center pole and then a spider web. And this is the structure that we'd like to propose. As you see, I have included some photos for you. This is a structure for five to 12 years of age, but as you see, this little kid, he's actually younger than five, but he managed to do some climbing and use the structure as well. And then the bottom slide that I included for you shows his father also took the opportunity to do some climbing on the structure. I think it's the nature of the structure. It invites people to, probably will invite teenagers and maybe adults to do some fitness work on the display equipment. And the type of cables, there are six strength cables, and they're galvanized and wire wrapped and fused together. We also found out that this type of structure, we can replace loops independently, where Little Tykes, for example, some other ones, you have to take out the whole structure if you have a rope damaged, so it makes a big difference sometimes in these equipments. This is a comparison in terms of a site plan revision that we have to make, and which is minimal in this case. They're both, the original structure requires 31 feet by 31 feet, the free fall zone, and this one requires 31 nine inches, 31 feet, nine inches by 31 feet.
Is there a step under north? North of the...
That's a ramp.
That's a ramp?
That's a ramp, yeah. This structure is actually accessible, ADA accessible, and the wood fibers that we have are also ADA accessible, so would allow that opportunity. This is, I wanted to include this slide for comparison in terms of scale. The original structure, which was a spider-like metal frame, and then you had ropes in between the metal frame, was nine feet high, the top of it. This one, the pole is 12 feet high, but the pole is, let me show you, let's go back. If you look at the north elevation, the pole reaches, the top of the pole is to the bottom of that small louver in scale. In the lower gable, the top of the pole, it reaches the bottom of that louver. So in a scale relatively, it's still minimal to the scale of the bungalow. And we feel that this new structure is quite transparent and probably would be less imposing on the bungalow.
Now, that was the actual picture of the bungalow, right? And that's where the loca... That's a different picture.
This is, this one?
Yeah.
This one is actually a model. It's a picture of the model, and that shows the original play structure...
Okay.
...in the model, and then I included, just in comparison, the two different ones, overlaid them.
So it's fairly close to the structure, though, again?
The location would be the same as the wires that you see?
Okay.
Yeah, that's the location. It's not close. I mean, it's close, it's in proximity, but it's not right adjacent to it. Yeah. And this is a general schedule. We're starting construction officially today on the bungalow, yeah, and we are looking to finish in early April and then move the staff from the house on Harvard Street to the bungalow and start the construction of the park. So we're looking at the park start in April, finishing in September, and we will have about two months' maintenance period on the park. Hopefully, we'll open the park by the end of the year.
That's good.
And that concludes my presentation.
I have a question. I remember some figure as far as the estimate of cost, of some $300,000 it was?
For which one?
For the bungalow.
The bungalow, I gave a cost estimate when I, when we first presented to council to save the bungalow or to tear it down, that there were two options. I gave $180,000 construction cost, correct?
Are we, are we...
Close to it?
Close to it, higher, lower?
Well, we, the actual bid came at 159.
Wow, excellent.
Very good.
Yeah, so we're doing very well.
Good.
Yeah, including our contingency, we'll still have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sure, I have a question. Now, this, the red structure that the clay, that's the one that, has City Council seen that?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna take it to City Council.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I would like to also make it clear that we will have the ropes in black, so the structure won't look red. It will be black. It's a custom color that we will incorporate.
I still think it's an interesting structure. I'd like to have seen the other one, but I guess there were some issues with it.
The other one?
The Compan one.
Yeah, the little more...
Yeah, including also, if you replace, you have to replace the whole panel, I mean, the large... And one of the things is their spare parts are in Europe, so every time you have to do something, they don't stock much here.
And this particular one is...
Compan, the original one that we proposed, very difficult.
Is that a local manufacturer, or...
Landscape Structures, the second one? Yeah, very reputable. Probably Ms. Landergan's familiar with it.
Have used them many times.
Very reputable manufacturer.
And safety-wise, does it have any issues? Is it safer than the one...
We're much more comfortable with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to say. And it's going to be a cost-saving of between $15,000 plus and $18,000 to the project as well.
That's good.
Please.
I have a question regarding the... Now, here, you have exterior walls, Highland moss?
Yes.
And then you have exterior plaster and secondary window frames?
Yes.
Now, walls and, where are these two going? This is, well, it says walls.
Let me take a...
But this one, I'm not sure.
Oops. All right, the, we have the wood cladding on, if you look at the north elevation, the wood cladding is the lighter green, and then the plaster is on the front plaster. We have, you see the plaster?
Yes, yes.
And then we're highlighting the interior, you know, the window frame, the interior of the window with the white.
I see, okay.
This gives it a level of sophistication, the different layering.
Okay.
And the color actually outside in the regular daylight will look a little lighter than the fluorescent light.
These are much lighter than what you have.
Yeah, it's different there.
I thought that was yellow, but I didn't see it there for a minute there.
Don't trust the screen colors.
Yeah, that's why I thought it's important to bring the paint chips. Actually, the yellow over there is the darker green.
Nice colors. Any other questions from the...
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you. I have to say, I like landscape structures. I think they're really wonderful, firm, and they do a very good job, and I like the little tent element that's gonna go in. I think it's really in keeping, I do like Compan, and I have seen it, but I know how difficult it is for maintenance, and I think we have to consider all of these issues when we're putting it into a public space. But thank you for bringing it back to us. I think the colors are grand, they're really bungalow-ish, and I think all of the details that you have picked out are gonna be really a wonderful addition to that little bungalow for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think that was just informational. Am I correct?
I think so, it was, yes. And I agree totally with what Stephanie said. I think it's going to be a nice project.
Yeah.
And that was informational to the commission because the building isn't designated, but the Parks Department wants to reach out to make sure that when they're working on projects that have historic resources, that the commission is actually reviewing that and accepts their proposals. And it's pretty exciting what the Parks Department has done with this park and also with the Adam Square Park, to incorporate historic structures into public parks. It's a nice precedent, so...
It's nice that our parks are following the Organic Act when national parks aren't. Would you like these back? Yes? Okay, all right, well, we'll make sure that you give them back. Any other comments from the commissioners?
I'm fine with the presentation. I think everything is well. I like the colors, and I like the new structure, actually. I hope to see it soon. Thank you.
No, I just agree with what you said, and I am also anxious to see this completed. We needed that, especially on that area of town. This will be wonderful. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Bittar. So we will move on to item 7A, our new business, which is 955 Rose Mount Road, Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act contract application. Wouldn't it be nice to have a less than typeface next time?
Okay. I'll introduce the project, or the proposal for the Glendale Register nomination and Mills Act contract. 955 Rose Mount is in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. It's in, actually, the original section of Rossmoyn that was developed by the Haddock Nibley Corporation that we learned about when we were looking at the Royal Boulevard nominations, so this is the earliest part of Rossmoyn. And this is the hillside area above Mountain Avenue, so we're up on Rose Mount Drive, a block up onto the hill. And here is the house in question. It's a lovely Spanish colonial revival. It was built in 1934. The original owner was Dr. Chance Tetwill and his wife. They did not prove to be significant in the history of Glendale, but I love his name. And they basically built a fairly large and classic Spanish revival house, but this was designed by Milton J. Black. And if you're not familiar with Milton Black, I'm going to show you a building that I believe everyone is familiar with, that he designed, but we'll talk about him a bit more. Here are a few pictures of the house in question, when you see it from the street. I think it has kind of the most interesting thing about it is the kind of rhythmic interplay of some of the volumes with these projecting volumes coming up at the second floor, the roof stepping gradually up as it moves to the east, and then the interplay of the arched window with the kind of very simple square window openings, and then the little corbeled, little arched corbels under those projections. The house has pretty much all of its original features intact. Here are a couple of representative photos showing the wood casement windows, the decorative treatment of the mullions on one of the window openings, and then also what appears to be an original, if not a very early, front door, which is quite nice. Going around to the back of the house, we can see that there was a sleeping porch that was enclosed with windows that we think are original. They look, they're very similar, they're pretty much identical to all the other windows, so it's not a sleeping porch, as we sometimes find them where it's just a screened porch, but certainly a nice feature to have on the back. And then there's an interesting feature in the backyard, as it steps up the hill, there's a lot of stone retaining walls and stairwells and walkways. We don't have any permit information about those. They appear to be early, if not original, but it's definitely an interesting feature using that kind of native stone. The house has had very few alterations. I've selected a couple here to show you. The three garage doors were replaced at some point. Those are actually aluminum doors. There's, on the side of the house, there's a greenhouse window that comes out from the kitchen, but as opposed to the ones we usually see, which are prefab vinyl or aluminum greenhouse windows, this one's actually made of wood. It's not really visible from the street. And then the front steps, and I don't know if any of you had a chance to visit over the weekend, but the front steps, to me, look like something has happened there. We don't have any permit history for that. The plaster work and then the tile work itself appears fairly fresh, but the configuration of the stairwell and the terrace at the front, as far as we know, is original to the design of the house. Milton Black was quite well-known in the '30s and '40s. He started his work working in the Spanish colonial revival. Several of his properties are designated by the City of Los Angeles through their Cultural Heritage Program. Two of these are the Del Rio, the House for Dolores Del Rio, the actress that was built in 1936 in Hollywood, and then the El Cadiz Apartments from 1928, also in Hollywood. What I first learned, when I first learned about Milton Black, it was through these Streamline Modern buildings that he did, which are just really quite amazing. This is the Mortania, named after the steamship, the, I guess, cruise ship, I guess, at the time, and this was built for Jack Haley, the Scarecrow in Wizard of Oz, and his wife, as a rental property. And then here's the property. If you didn't know Milton Black's career, you know this building. He did design The Tale of the Pup, so he was quite versatile, obviously. The house on Rose Mount is the only property that we know that he designed in Glendale, but we can't say that that necessarily adds to its importance. When I was considering the various criteria that we have for designation, I felt that the house does meet criterion D for its outstanding attention to architectural design, detail, materials, and craftsmanship. Milton Black's connection to the house doesn't quite meet criterion C, which is our criterion for significant people associated with the property, because his role in the history and development of Glendale is far from clear. We know nothing about it, except for this one house, but I do think that because he's an architect of some note, and this is an interesting example of his work that we know of throughout the Los Angeles area, that he kind of adds a certain extra oomph to the inclusion under criterion D. That's the end of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, the owner of the house is here to talk to you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Now, it only meets the second part of the criteria?
Yeah, in Rossmoyn, you can imagine how hard it is to be the finest example of the Spanish colonial revival, because we have a neighborhood full of just great examples. And we've used this kind of breakdown several times in our nominations in the last few years, because this criterion has an ORE in the middle of it, so it can meet either part of it, so...
Now, the alteration we talked about is the front stairs.
Front stairs, as we were presuming. We can't say that for sure. It was there when the Lesbys bought the house, so it could be a previous owner. Doesn't look like something that would have required a permit, so we don't have permit history for that. There's the greenhouse window, and then also the...
Garage doors.
I forgot to mention.
Garage doors, yeah.
The garage doors, and also the chimney on the side was rebuilt after the earthquake. And, you know, until I read that, I was looking at what I thought was the original chimney, so it certainly is in keeping with the house.
Go back to that picture. That detail only occurs in the front, right? Not only in that window?
Yeah, it's just that window. Most of the window openings are very, it's kind of got an austerity through the whole design.
Great little detail.
I'm very happy that the windows are intact. The integrity of the windows are all there. That's all for now.
Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to go to criterion C, that no important people live there, but we could consider that present owners are important.
Well, of course they are. But we don't have a lot of precedent for designating for the current owners.
No, I don't have any...
Yeah, let's hope for the Lesbys, that they'll get to that point, so...
No, I don't have any more comments.
All right, well, we do have one speaker card for Ms. Adrian Lesby. Would you like to come up and state your name and present? Thank you.
Hey, never done this before, I'm a little nervous. My name's Adrian Lesby. I'm co-owner of the house with my husband, and I guess I just wanted to say, we, I mean, we're doing this because we love this house, and we bought this house five and a half years ago, and we had looked for about a year at houses. We saw over 150 houses, and the day that we walked into this house, we made an offer, and it was like we knew it was the house. It was just so beautiful. My husband's a set designer, and he's very picky and meticulous in the fact that it had the original windows and all the beautiful details, and it needed work, it needed to be repainted. We had it all repainted, all that kind of stuff, but the bones of the house were just really beautiful, and we felt like we wanted to have the beauty and integrity of the house preserved, so that's why we've, that's why I'm here today.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Lesby?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is closed, and discussion by commissioners, gentlemen?
Well...
One of you like to start?
I'll pass it, you go ahead.
Okay.
No, they're not going to have comments, you go ahead.
I actually had little issues at the beginning with this house, but as I looked at it again today, there was still some concern about the garage door. How do we go about, these are garage doors that don't fit the period of the architecture. They're metal doors. Is there any way we could do anything about these garage doors? Because I had a concern with the chimney, but I looked at the chimney again, I don't think there's not much you could do with it, because it's been altered and we don't want to overburden the applicant, but I still had a concern with the garage doors, because when you look at this house, it's a beautiful house, beautiful setting, mass and scale are there, it's just those doors take away from, you know, take the house away when you're looking at it.
They're pretty prominent.
Yeah, I mean, it's just pretty prominent, yeah. I mean, you know, is there any way we could paint these doors or, you know, change the color on it to...
I have not brought my checkbook. Well, I mean, how do we...
There are two ways we can...
That's my question to staff, is how we approach this.
Yeah, there are two ways to approach it. Since the applicant is applying for the Mills Act, under Mills Act contracts, we can stipulate that certain work will be done and ask for a work schedule, so that within a year of designation or entry into the contract, we expect that the garage doors will be painted, if you think that's the solution. I thought the same thing. The trick here is that the trim on the house is all white, so the garage doors naturally followed that, and I'm not sure that we would ask to have all of the trim painted to match the doors. As far as them being aluminum doors, because they have that vertical ribbing, it, you know, if it were painted a darker color, I think they would kind of disappear and almost look like wood doors. So I think that would probably be the best way to do it. You have in the past asked applicants to do work prior to designating, and we could, I'm not sure that's always the best way to go, since we do have some control under the Mills Act program to require that work is done.
I'm very impressed with the house. I think this is a house that is fairly simple in design, but it has character and details, and I think it's similar to Wallace Sniff's style of architecture. But I still want to hear from my colleagues that, you know, about the garage doors, if there is any concern on that.
So you looked at me and...
Would you like to go next?
Stephanie is not here, so it must be me. Yeah, I liked the house, too. I went there Saturday when it was raining, and I saw it today, and there's different conditions, when it was dark and romantic, and when it was sunny, and different. was sunny, and different, it just, the house is just beautiful, it's very nice. I like the simplicity, I like that accent window, and the simple designs, I like everything, except the garage doors, they're very, they're just popping out. And I just heard you saying that your husband is a set designer. It is very difficult to deal with designers.
It's not like the...
If you can come up with...
We, believe me, we would love to replace those doors, we looked into getting, not only wood doors, but we found a company that made these beautiful wood doors that looked like those old-fashioned double ones that opened, but they don't, it opens the regular, and it had black hinges on it, and they were beautiful, they were $9,000 apiece. And in the five years that we've been here, there's, we've had to, it wasn't just the outside of the house that needed work, the inside needed restoration everywhere to make it look original, and so that's what we've been spending the money on, and ideally, if it, you know, at some point, if we, if it became historic, we were getting a tax break, we would love to be able to replace the doors altogether with wood ones, but right now, it's like, it would be expensive, very, very expensive to do, so that's kind of where our situation is at, but it's on the list, for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I have a question, what are we going to name this?
Our policy is to name houses after their address, unless there was a significant person associated with it, so we'll call it 955 Rosemount.
Yeah, well, yeah, if I may continue. I like to see that painted, but I don't want, if it cannot be done, I do not want to jeopardize the nomination, if everybody agrees to nominate it, so if, I also believe that when the money comes, either through tax break or whatever, they will do it. But let me just go back again, ask, how about just painting at this time, until you do...
Yeah, well, I mean, do you want them painted black to match the...
No, no, not black, you said, you said black?
Well, I'm asking...
Again, you can come up with...
Possibly, well, I mean, you could discuss that with your husband, some darker color, if it is darker, it is not jump out as it does now.
Right.
A lighter tone of possibly the building itself, something that is in the same color language.
Sure, yeah.
But not white.
Yeah.
So if you agree on that, then you can come up with a color sample, and Jay will approve it, and that would be it.
Okay, that would be fine.
So if that's the case, then I have no other comments, and I can go further.
I have to say, it's really a lovely house, I love the Spanish colonial style, but this is really a great house. Again, I agree, the doors, at least, I was very happy that they had vertical elements, instead of horizontal elements, it was like, well, they are aluminum. I agree with my colleagues here, I believe that it needs to, they should be painted, I think that, in this, you know, brownish tone, the mauve tone, or maybe even the front door, having it in, so that it's, and as a steam painter, I'm sure your husband's extremely talented, and can make a purse out of a pig's ear, but this is not that severe. So I think that, I would love to recommend this for the Mills Act, I think it's really lovely, I think the windows are fabulous, and the doors, and 9,000, that's a pretty penny for each. You might want to look at designer doors, they're online, and they have some nice choices that maybe aren't in that same range.
Yeah, yeah.
In your future.
Okay.
But, so...
And as a property on the register, a change of garage doors is going to come back to us, so that we're going to be reviewing the design at staff level possibly, unless there was an issue that we had to bring into the commission, so...
If they want to change it.
If they put in new doors, yeah.
Can we, can we stipulate that when they come back for that, we don't charge them any fee? Do we charge them fees when they bring the...
There's a fee for the Mills Act, but not for the register.
Register, so when they come back for that, the Mills Act will not be affected?
Coming back, if they came back to the commission, there is a design review fee, but my guess is that we can work out a garage door that wouldn't have to come back to the commission.
I think that sounds very...
Is there a permit fee? Permit fee for that?
Is there a review fee?
To be honest, I'm not sure about garage doors.
I don't think garage doors require a permit.
I bet there is.
There is?
I don't believe garage doors require a building.
I don't think so.
So I may be speaking out of turn, but...
No, and one other thing the commission can do in terms of the paint job, we still, this still needs to be scheduled to go to city council for approval, and if the paint is something that could be done within, you know, from today, before the council hearing, then you'd have some assurance that, you know, that work was done before it was officially designated, or we could just...
Well, I think that might help the council in their deliberations to see the color, if you want to bring the color you're choosing that you've worked with for Jay with it, so because I don't know if you'd want to do it, and then the council goes, why did they paint it this color? I would rather what we propose be reasonable, and not something that has to be brought back for a second.
So just bring a sample of color, show you the color?
We'll put that in the staff report for the city council.
And then be in the staff report, that way, if there's a marked response from the council, you haven't painted it three times.
Right, okay, that would be great.
I had a question, Chair.
Please.
No, I know I mentioned the chimney cleft there, do we need to paint that too, or everybody's satisfied with that one?
Well, it's...
Let's go back to that. If you remember the...
You can see it from one side, but I don't know how the storm is.
Yeah, I thought it looked like the stairs, at the top of the pilasters, they kind of emulated that.
I am comfortable with it.
Okay. Susan. Then, that's all my questions.
It didn't scream out to me, so I didn't... All right, are there any other comments from...
No.
No, and I would like to nominate this as a historic resource, and also approval of the, not nominate, let's, to recommend to the council to approve the building, 955 Rosemount, as historic resource, as well as approve, as well as recommend to the council for approval of the Mills Act.
May I have a second?
Second, but you need to add the condition of the paint?
Do we need to do that?
With the condition of staff review and presentation of choice, color choice to the council?
Okay, you said it, I don't need to repeat it, huh?
I second that.
All right.
Okay, interns, I'm a roll call, Commissioner Marion?
Yes.
Commissioner Mardian?
Yes.
Chair Landergan?
Yes.
Thank you, what's 320?
Thank you so much, it's really lovely. And thank you for taking care of it. All right, we now have item eight, Signing Department Updates and Informational Briefings. We have here a briefing regarding the policy for considering variance applications in historic districts, and in front of us, we have a variance application.
That's right. So this goes back several months, when then-Commission Member Landergan asked us to kind of explain to the commission how variance applications will work, now that we have our first historic district, and we may have some others sometime soon. So I sat down with the zoning administrator to make sure that I understood the full process, and basically, as with everything that we're doing in the historic districts, we're trying to keep the process as much like all of our other processes that homeowners and applicants have to go through for the historic districts as it is for anywhere else in Glendale. This is an example where that will be what happens. Basically, a person who's proposing an addition or some changes to their property is going to come to the permit service counter, they're going to sit down with one of our current planners, which is the standard process, and this is assuming they haven't called me first. Because people are in historic districts, they may actually get into the habit of calling the preservation planner, just to say, hey, I'm doing some work, but let's assume that hasn't happened. They sit down with the planner, and they look at the application, and they determine if any variances are needed. Sometimes variances are glaring, sometimes they're kind of subtle, so it requires a bit of looking at, but the typical things that will be getting variances are overages in FAR, lot line issues, encroachments into the lot line, or the setback areas. I'm trying to think what else, height issues, garage, the size of garages, those sorts of things, possibly could all require variances. What we did, and this is a new thing, and that's why you have the new variance application in front of you, we added a line, so that the applicant is responsible for telling us, yes or no, is your house on the Glendale Register? Yes or no, are you inside a historic district? And we don't care in the districts whether it's a contributor or a non-contributor, the idea is that for any of those applications where someone's checked off a yes, the planner, who's going to stay with this project through the whole approval process for the variance, is going to come to me, so I'm going to be involved in every variance application that involves designated historic buildings. And the reason why that's important is the variance is granted before the Historic Preservation Commission sees anything, and the zoning administrator makes a determination that you are not going to be privy to. So having me as the preservation staff person involved will hopefully kind of smooth over any issues. Ultimately, most of these, or many of these projects will come to you for design review. Some of them may be exempt from design review, so the variance could be granted, and you may not even know about it. The goal is to take the historic character of the property and then the historic district, if that's the case, into account as we're looking at the variance. And I think one of the things that we can say is that if you own a historic property that's been designated, we're going to, you know, we can't say we're going to give away variances, but we're going to take the fact that you're preserving a historic property that's been determined important to the history of Glendale into consideration, so it could make the city's determination a little easier in terms of considering whether a variance is appropriate or not.
Mr. Platt, is it possible, I don't know if you do this, to keep a running tally of any variances that would not come to us, that would be exempt, that you would do over the counter, so that we would have maybe a monthly list of any of those variances, so that we would know ahead of time and not be calling you, wondering what's happening?
When you're driving down the street.
Yes.
I'm sure, I'm sure that's okay, I'd like to run it by the zoning administrator, just to make sure that there's no issue with that, but I'll definitely ask, and I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay, I mean, not before...
It seems to make sense, yeah.
But if you do make that determination, it would be nice to maybe know at the next meeting that these following actions had happened on these properties, and so...
No, there's a slight possibility that somebody might not know whether his project or his building is in a historic district, they have moved in and they just want to start. Is there any, any way that the planner, or whoever is taking the application, from that taking that, somebody will check it?
Yeah, it may not happen at the first step, but there, it will happen during the process, because all of our designated properties have holds on them in the computer tracking system, so the planner, as they're entering something into CSI, and it should happen near the beginning, definitely when they actually fill out the application and pay their application fee, they'll find that there's a hold on it, and the only way to, these are the hardest holds that we have, there are various, you know, it's a scale, to remove that hold, I have to do that. So, so what, we don't want to wait and have it come up later in the process, we want to know as soon as possible, but you're right, some people may not know, or may choose not to check it off, so...
For listing, I'm sure, I'm almost sure they would know whether their house is listed or not, that they would know, yeah.
Mr. Marion, if I may ask, so the historic districts, as they're designated and come into effect, they get reflected on the zoning map, so...
Oh, yeah.
When a planner's looking at the map to confirm what the zoning is, they should see it's a historic district overlay zone.
Yeah, yeah, I...
I have a question.
Please do.
Variances, because I brought this up the last time too, when we designated the district, I mean, it's still in the process, when you have a, you know, house that has one-car garage, and now the rule says, or it's been in effect, when you add certain square footage, if the garage doesn't comply, you need to bring the garage up to code. Now, is that something exempt from us? Or, let's say they get granted the variance to enlarge it, and the project that they're doing is somehow exempt, it's in the back, it's within the 700 square feet.
Yeah, then it depends whether it meets the guidelines or not.
Right, now, who, who looks at that garage? Because some of these garages may be in the back end of the driveway?
Yeah, they can be very visible from the streets.
Would you consider that, you know, because there's a rule also, if you see anything visible from street 200 square feet, it goes to designer review or our commission here. Now, are those, you know, garages, we're going to see those garages?
I presume that you'll see many of those garages, if not all. I know that garages, freestanding garages are exempt from, you know, lot line issues, and I'm not sure, when you're adding square footage, I think that's when it's going to kick in, that you would need to enlarge the garage. And that's exactly the kind of variance that we, we want to, if you have a historic garage that can't easily meet the current standards, if it's a designated structure on a designated site, then we might be able to find a way to accommodate a second car somewhere else.
Mr. Marion, if I'm trying to understand your question, it's, in a situation where somebody is adding square footage onto a house, let's say, in a historic district, there you have an existing one-car garage, as a result of their addition, they'll be required to enlarge the garage, your question is, who's going to look at that?
Who's going to look, yeah.
New garage, would it effectively be a new garage or expanded garage, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Because it's going to be more than 200 square feet.
Right, I mean, it would be subject to some level of design review, the question is whether that would be done at a staff level, or would require being reviewed by the commission.
What is it at this point now? Well, how are we treating the...
Generally, in those kind of situations, we've been reviewing them at a staff level to ensure that it's consistent with the style of the main house.
However, there are some accessory buildings and garages that are contributors, they aren't designated as such in historic districts, are they?
They are, well, the entire property is designated, so from throughout the property line, everything is there. The historic report for Cottage Grove specifically calls out some of the garages, because they're designed in the same style as the house they're associated with. I think that, you know, what Alan was saying, that we're going to, you know, we have the square footage rules that kick in mandatory HBC review, so if we go over that, then we won't have a question, otherwise, there, it could be staff review.
But if you added a whole other garage, that kicks it over the square footage, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine that, I'm picturing a garage that's almost enough, not quite...
Ah, I see, you know, has a little shed or something.
Right.
Going back to what you said, are, because, are we, just because it's designated, or just because it's in a historical district, are we going to be more lenient in giving these variances?
It's going to be a case-by-case situation, but I think part of our review is going to take the history of the site into consideration, and if something that would be, if, there are situations where people have to remove square footage from a building because it's over the lot line, and if we were saying, well, but that's the historic side of the living room of this designated house, maybe we can allow that condition to be non-conforming.
Because that's exactly where I was going, especially on the side setback, because while we have a lot of these older homes that have three to four feet setback...
Right, exactly.
And with the new rules and regulations that you need to increase that setback, so if we can't chop it off, then we'll let them have it.
Then we might let them have more square footage on the second floor, or...
So the determination will take into consideration the existing character of the neighborhood and the patterning that occurs to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that's what we were hoping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one other notice for you that we didn't have on the agenda, it's just a scheduling issue, which is basically that tomorrow night, city council is hearing the Cottage Grove Historic District and the Ardeveen Highlands Historic District, and this is the introduction of the ordinance, so this is the hearing where public testimony is going to be taken, so the public who's interested in the historic districts should be at city council tomorrow night at 6:00. Commissioners are welcome to testify as Glendale citizens, if they'd like.
Thank you, I was planning on going, I was excited to see that.
We also have a register nomination.
Oh, that's right, 418 Wes Kenneth is going to be on the Colonial Revival, Cedar Knoll. That's right.
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Platt, very much, and staff, for bringing the variance... I wanted to thank you, Mr. Platt, very much, and staff, for bringing the variance issue back to us. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, do we have any other comments from commissioners for number nine?
I don't have any comments.
I don't have any comments, so thank you.
I would like to thank you all for nominating me and voting for me for chair. I hope to serve you well, and thank you all very much, and I would be happy to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.